Broadcast is set.
Dr. Thornton, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to turn off your wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with our meeting. Again, good evening. This is a Zoom teleconference that the Education is conducting. This is our second or meeting of this type, which is going very successfully. I would ask everyone to please mute your devices so that we can avoid the background noise. For those who are not able to observe the meeting tonight, please remember that our meeting is being recorded for the public's benefit and will be available to you on our website. Except when it's time to speak or vote, I'd ask board members to please mute your microphones to avoid the background noise. I ask board members to please raise your hands when you wish to speak, and I will then recognize you. If for any reason I do not see you, please just speak, and then I will recognize you. Let me say to the public that we did have before this meeting an executive session of the board. We will have to return to executive session to complete our business as soon as the public session is over. Mr. Omalola, would you please lead us in the board's prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, serious action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands one nation under God.
And justice. Thank you, Ms. Queen, for the flag. Ms. King for the flag. Thank you very much. Ms. Ellis, would you please now call the roll?
Yes. Excuse me. Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Omalola?
Here.
Ms. Queen?
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Swan?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Thornton?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Colleagues, if you'll please now turn your attention to the agenda for this meeting, and I'll receive a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Robbed mood and seconded that the agenda for our April fifteenth board meeting be approved without modification. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. The ayes have it, and the vote is unanimous. Colleagues, if you will now turn your attention to our minutes of our April second work session, and a motion is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Robbed mood and seconded by Ms. Queen and Mr. Swan seconding it. Any modifications to the minutes of our work session of April second? Here are no modifications. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have. Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, would you please join me and to the viewing for listening audience, join me also in a moment of silence for several colleagues and school associated and past since our last meeting. Many of them fallen victim to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Among them, they're not all COVID nineteen, but some are. Ms. Anna Miley, the mother of Dr. Carrie Libby, our chief academic officer; Elise Creasy, priest, teacher at the Northwestern High School; Terrence Burke, who's a guidance counselor and head basketball coach at the Northwestern High School; Kurt Williams, one of our bus drivers from the Garrett Bus Lot; Mildred Ridley Gray, former of the Prince George's Garden Special Center. The school is now closed. Ms. Gray was seven months short of her one hundredth birthday when she passed. Just last year, many former staff members honored her on her ninety-ninth birthday. Gertrude Miller Taylor, who's a sister of Winsome Falby, in the Department of Family and School Partnerships and Community Outreach; Sandra Schrader, who's a teacher at the Rich Press Elementary School; Ruth Tarantino, who's a teacher at the Bladensburg High School; Anthony Cole, who's a ground shop maintenance service staff member; Euston Stewart, auditorium technician at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts; and Amber Charles, who's a paraprofessional at the Kenmore Early Childhood Center; Olawule Ogundwari, who's a teacher at the Sutland High School; and finally, Arthur Bats, the father of Tawana Lane, one of our human resources partners. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and we'll continue to keep the families of our colleagues in our thoughts and prayers. Would you please, to the audience, check our website for information regarding upcoming board meetings? And at this point, Dr. Gosson, I would ask you to please give us your report.
Thank you. Good evening. This week, Prince George's County Public Schools marked our first day of distance learning. I want to express my appreciation to every member of the Prince George's County Public School team for their incredible work to completely transform teaching and learning in our school system. In less than a week, our team devised a plan for instruction, distributed over sixty thousand Chromebooks to students in need, and put the plan in motion. To give you a sense of our engagement on the first day, there were more than one thousand eight hundred seventy-five online Zoom meetings in twenty-four hours with more than forty-two thousand participants. While we're working to address some challenges such as providing student logins and passwords quickly and creating additional supports where needed, overall, I've had wonderful reports from families, students, and educators about their experiences. In addition to online teaching, we're also providing lessons on television and still distributing hard copy enrichment packets. If you have not seen it yet, I strongly encourage you to see the hard work that some of our Prince George's County Public School teachers are doing in delivering lessons on channels thirty-eight and ninety-six for students in pre-K through grade five that do not have technology. The lessons are phenomenal, and I'm so grateful for the teachers that agreed to be vulnerable and allow everyone in the Prince George's County community to experience their amazing teaching. We will continue to provide content enrichment packets for students in grades six through twelve. New lessons will be posted on Monday, April twentieth, and located in the forty-three meal distribution sites. This work for students should last for approximately two weeks. In addition to providing instructional support for our students, we're continuing to offer meal service to students during the week at forty-three schools' distribution sites. Students get breakfast, lunch, and a snack for two days on Monday and three days on Wednesday from ten a.m. to one p.m. Parents may pick up meals for students who are unable to come to the site by showing a student ID or report card. To date, we have served over one thousand five hundred meals in the past month. I want to give special thanks to the essential employees of Prince George's County Public Schools, starting with our food service personnel, who has distributed, as I said, over a hundred thousand meals over the last month. Next, our building services, maintenance staff, and bus lot team for cleaning every school, administrative office, and bus in our school system. I want to thank our information technology technicians, principals, assistant principals, area office staff, and other school-based staff who coordinated the Chromebook distribution, and lots of central office staff that makes sure payroll is taken care of bi-weekly. And last but not least, I want to thank the teachers who have remained committed to our students and families. Everyone's effort continues to make me Prince George's County Public School proud and Prince George's County Public Schools strong. Education is an essential business, and I'm proud of the way our community has come together to help our students, families, and the broader community. As we weather this public health crisis, please take care of yourselves, your loved ones. Stay healthy, stay well, and stay at home. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gosson. And on behalf of the board, I want to extend to you again our thanks for the leadership that you're providing in the midst of this crisis. I would also extend on behalf of the board appreciation to all of our staff members, teachers, support staff, paraprofessionals, and others who are responding, I think impressively, in the midst of this crisis. I also want to extend on behalf of the board thanks to all of our elected officials at all levels, federal, state, and local, for the support that they're giving to this school system in the midst of it all. But most importantly, I want to thank all of the parents who are now real teachers, who are now teaching and working with our children. I want to thank them on behalf of the board for their patience that they're demonstrating in this and the support that they're giving us as we move forward to address this issue. I would say to the parents also that just make sure that you can go and see our discussion on our website if you are not able to join us tonight.
Dr. Thornton.
Yes, Ms. Queen?
I have one question. I just want clarification from Dr. Gosson. Just actually, I have you repeat yourself, because I noticed while we were in between, and I was checking my email, that my parent had emailed me. So apparently, when people go to pick the lunches up, they're a little bit confused what is needed. I heard you say that either a student ID or a report card, not both. So I just wanted you to clarify.
That is correct. You clarified. One or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, we will now move to our consent agenda, agenda item number four. Dr. Gosson, would you please introduce items four-one through four-four?
Yes. Items four-point-one through four-point-four requires board approval of proclamations commemorating Mental Health Awareness Week, Human Personnel Worker Week, National School Nurse Day, and Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Week.
Motion is in order.
Make so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Queen and seconded by Mr. Swan that the board approves items four-one through four. For seeing no questions regarding that, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that that is unanimous. And thank you, Dr. Gosson. We will now move to item six-one. Yes, six-one. It says six-one, Ms. King. Governance, second reader, rescission of policies. And I'm going to turn the floor now over to the chair of our Governance and Policy Committee, Ms. Ahmed, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Colleagues, the Policy and Governance Committee met on Wednesday, February twelfth, with the following members in attendance: myself as committee chair, Ms. Boozer Strather as vice chair, Dr. Alvin Thornton, Mr. Joshua Omalola, and Mr. Joshua Thomas. And amongst the items that we considered were the policies that are before you to be considered for rescension. And after a robust discussion, the committee voted unanimously of those present to rescind these policies. Ms. Boozer Strather, at our previous meeting, had gone through and explained the reasoning behind why we were considering and why it was approved from the committee to rescind these policies. I'll go through them very briefly before moving to rescind these policies on behalf of the committee. Policy twenty-two hundred, unfortunately, the Head Start Shared Governance Policy is not applicable to our current operations. Policy thirty-six hundred, regarding wireless telecommunication facilities, our school district decided to opt out of wireless telecommunication facilities a few years ago, and so this policy is not applicable at this time. Policy forty-one thirty-six, the appearance of school principals at a board meeting is more in relation to practice than it is to big P policy. Policy eighty-three sixty-one, the tapes of Board of Education meetings references old technology that is not being used anymore. By law, ninety-three sixty-two, the construction of the agenda, those provisions are included in another policy already. And by law, ninety-three sixty-three, a notification of members is outdated, given the implementation of new technology, more specifically, board docs. With that, Mr. Chair, I move on behalf of the committee to rescind these policies.
It is a committee report, Madam Chair, and so a motion is not in order. Now, are there any questions about the committee report? Ms. Williams?
I would just like to amend the recommendation to add a line to the memo where we have one policy that has been replaced by or is a part of another policy. Just have that noted, just so that it's clear why it's being rescinded.
If I may, I don't know that we can amend the memo, but I think it would be important to note this in the minutes.
That's acceptable to you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, that's acceptable to you.
I... Sure. There could be an addendum to the memo that's uploaded.
Ms. King?
I just want to make it clear. The reason behind it is because we all understand here today why the decision was made, and the information can be found in meeting minutes that are related to a committee. I think that in the future, if someone were to reflect that onto the rescinded policy, it would just make it easier for someone to understand to have that information as a part of this document. That's the only reason.
And I'm not seeing any objection from the chair of the committee or any other member of the committee, so, Ms. King, we will make that adjustment, coordinate with Ms. Ahmed to make sure, and Ms. Williams to make sure that we're doing it right. Okay. Those in favor of the rescissions as recommended by the committee, please say aye.
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 Opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that it is unanimous. And, Ms. Ahmed, thank you so much, and committee members, for that report. We will now move to the second reader on financial literacy, and we will proceed in this way. I'll first recognize Ms. Ahmed for any remarks she would like to make. I will then receive the report from Mr. Montero, who's chair of Academic Achievement Committee. I will then recognize Mr. Burrows and Mr. Omalola, who are the primary sponsors of this initiative, followed by any questions or concerns that may come from board members. Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. On behalf of the Policy Committee, we did bring this forward as a committee. We did vote to support this resolution as a committee several weeks ago. I think that the members of the committee still stand in supporting this initiative and this effort, and we look forward to seeing its passage tonight.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ahmed, for your initial leadership on this issue and for your continuing support of it. Mr. Montero, would you please present the report of the committee?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just have to start by thanking Ms. Ahmed and the work of your committee, and our vice chair, Burrows, and student member, Mr. Omalola, for being the driving force behind this board action summary. Since it last came before the board, I think through a lot of good faith efforts from the vice chair and others, the price has been reduced from the initial figure we saw down to four-point-oh-three-one million dollars. And it does call for the administration to present an implementation plan at the beginning of the next academic year with the recommendation that the coursework, taking this course, would be recommended in tenth grade in the sophomore year for our students. But, because I don't want to talk too long, you all saw the board action summary, at a time where we're really facing, you know, the worst economic situation since the Depression. It's even more critical to make sure that our students are coming out equipped with how to manage their finances into the world they're going to inherit. So I just want to thank everyone for working in good faith. My vice chair, Ms. Williams, Mr. Swan, Ms. Shepherd, and again, Mr. Omalola, and also Chairman Wallace for participating in our committee meetings to add his budget perspective to our conversations. It was a more informed conversation we could get into going into the weeds on this academic requirement. So just want to thank everybody for working in good faith with us to get this to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership of this. We'll now turn to the primary sponsors of the Financial Literacy Initiative, Vice Chair Burrows, followed by Mr. Omalola, and then I'll recognize board members, starting with Mr. Swan. Mr. Burrows?
Mr. Chair, should I make a motion at this time, or?
That will be fine.
Okay.
It's a committee report, which does not require a motion, but please proceed.
I mean, you know, just, so I have a motion that I'll make. I move to approve this, the first reader document as a second reader, with the five amendments from Mr. Montero's committee. I did receive a list of amendments yesterday. Unfortunately, I'm going to just stick with the five that were approved in Mr. Montero's committee with no other further amendments outside of that, including no further amendments to the sponsor, co-sponsor list as well, or any of the other amendments that came yesterday evening. So that's my vote. I would like to thank every member.
Just a moment, Mr. Burrows, just a moment. Mr. Burrows is offering a substitute. He's offering a substitute to the committee report. I see, Ms. Queen, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay. That is the, are you seconding that, Ms. Queen?
Yes.
Okay. So, colleagues, that is, we're not voting, we're not discussing the report of the committee. We're discussing Mr. Burrows' substitute to the report, and I want Mr. Burrows to please proceed.
I would like to thank every member of the board, but most importantly, most especially, our student board member, who really worked night and day with his students to raise this issue before the board. I think his leadership on this issue has been remarkable, and every single student who testified in favor of this definitely helped. I saw had a big impact on the board. Every time a student testified, board members were taking notes. Board members were engaging with our students after the meeting, before the meeting, and a lot of that is a testament to Mr. Omalola's organizing capabilities and leadership skills. And so, Mr. Omalola, I want to publicly just thank you for organizing a hundred percent of that, because you did. I also want to thank the academic committee and the policy committee for getting this started. The policy committee, of course, for getting this started. The academic committee for closing this and doing what you all promised to do. You know, that it was a commitment from Mr. Montero and his committee members that we would get this done on this day, and you've done that. So I want to recognize you, Mr. Montero, and every member of your committee for holding on to that. I also want to thank Dr. Libby and Dr. Gosson, who worked, you know, pretty around the clock on this. I think Dr. Libby's leadership and just being smart and thoughtful and able to kind of deal with all of us, especially the academic committee, is a testament to her and her skills. So I want to thank you, Dr. Libby and Dr. Gosson, for being supportive and helping us arrive at consensus, because I think the CEO's administration helped us arrive at consensus. And the last thing that I will say is that I hope that this action today will benefit students for generations to come. We see, you know, we see it now during COVID. We saw it through the government shutdown, and we've seen it all throughout our community, that it's so important to teach our people, especially our young people, about money and how to use it to benefit them. With the school district, of our demographics, it's so important that we instill these values in our young people and teach them, prepare them. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Montero?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I won't speak too long. Mr. Burrows already stole half of my script. But as I was speaking with him earlier, I told him, you know, if we were in person today, I definitely would have handed flowers to Dr. Gosson and Dr. Libby. I'm amendered, Dr. for appreciative, being so patient with us. I don't think, I've seen a more patient Dr. Libby than when we had those meetings back-to-back. So I want to thank her for her administration. And I also want to thank some of the board members, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Ahmed, Mr. Wallace, Mr. Burrows, Mr. Murray, Mr. Valentine, Ms. Boozer Strather, Ms. Shepherd. When I approached them individually very early on about this piece of legislation, before I even gotten written, they were on board. So I want to thank you all so much for working with me and really allowing me to do what I set out, and that's fulfill my campaign goals, represent my peers as much as possible, and make sure that when I leave this board, that there's a legacy that I've left that can better every student in this county. In addition to that, I do want to just implore everyone, once again, that what we do today by passing this legislation, it's not for the adults, it's not for the staff, it's for the students. And I tell people all the time, not only here on the board, but in all the organizations I'm a part of, when we vote, we show our sponsorship, we show our support. And I will implore everyone to do that here again today and make sure that we set a good precedent for more pieces of legislation to come. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Omalola. Mr. Swan?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'd like to echo some of the comments and also say a couple other things. I think this is a phenomenal thing that we're doing. To the sponsors of this, Mr. Vice Chair and our student board member, certainly hats off to you. And student board member, if I remember correctly, I was one of the first individuals that you came to about this and totally agreed in support of this, to work on this effort very, very early on. Actually, I think it was my first board meeting at Northwestern High School. We had a conversation about this, and I told you one hundred percent I was on board. I don't know if you remember that conversation, but I certainly do, because it was the first, for me, the very first kind of thing to work on when I arrived. I will like to say to everyone here, I know this has been a very sensitive topic for us. It's great to see our students involved and engaged. Really appreciate all the work that the staff has done. Dr. Gosson, Dr. Libby, you guys are just phenomenal. We went, we put a lot of work into this, especially, and I didn't attend the policy committee meeting, so I wasn't there, but I'm sure you guys did a lot of work. I know in an academic committee, we did a lot of work in research and just making sure we were doing the best thing that we could for our students, as well as being good financial stewards, right? Because this is a course about financial literacy, and the last thing we want to do is not be financially prudent about our financial literacy course. And just so the public can see, right on the documents provided with the agenda, to be able to go from ten million dollars, nine-point-nine million, to four million dollars, that's about a six-million-dollar difference. It's huge, especially during this time that we're in, that we're going to have to make some strategic decisions about investing going forward, to all the things and issues that have been brought to our attention from our constituents, from various means as we go around in our, around the county to solve some of these issues, to be able to, be able to get this off the ground right, and not spend an extra six-million dollars. I think it's huge that we're doing the right thing. And more importantly, we do it right when everybody's involved and engaged at the appropriate points. And I know that there was a lot of confusion a few meetings back about this, and there was some disagreement about how to move forward. But I was glad to see that we were able to get through that. We were able to make that transition, and I think we have a much better document that supports our students, but we're doing it with financial, being good financial stewards. And I think that needs to be highlighted to all of you, because we were all involved, and so I yield back. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. And colleagues, before we call for the vote, I do want to say to the board how appreciative I am of how we have, I think, Mr. Montero, your member said, "We did it," and we are doing it. It's almost like making sausage, and we've gotten there. And we all know the kind of the issues that we've had to deal with in order to get here. This is an initiative that was initiated by, I was actually in Annapolis, but strongly supported by our vice chair, Mr. Omalola. Our students came to speak to us. We listened. We did go through some committee dynamics, but as you can see here today, those issues are now behind us, and we resolved it with the support of Ms. Ahmed and Mr. Montero. Vice Chair has reduced this to a motion. We don't know, we recognize it, but we will in recognition of his leadership of this initiative. This is an initiative that is sponsored primarily and aggressively by Mr. Burrows and Mr. Omalola, with, I think, what I'm picking up is unanimous co-sponsorship of all board members. So I want to thank all board members who have gotten us to this point. This is a high point for the children, students of Prince George's County, and I think for the Board of Education. So thank everybody for your contribution to this. So thank everybody for your contribution to this. I see Mr. Thomas.
I was actually just raising my hand to make sure my colleague, Ms. Queen, was noted.
Okay, Ms. Queen, and then hopefully we can call for a vote. Ms. Queen.
I appreciate you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you so very much, Dr. Thornton. I just want to also echo everybody. I'm glad you guys are finally jumping on. I know when I delicately brought it up last year, I actually argued with you guys the importance of us supporting this because as a person who degrees in accounting, I know how important money, knowing about finance is so important for everybody. But what I want to also is thank our constituents and thank the parents and everybody who sent the millions of emails to us telling us that they were in support and the reason why we should support it. I think that's so helpful also, besides the students coming out, because we need to know that we are doing the right things, that we're representing the community. And what I found out is a lot of parents, a lot of the community members, a lot of you guys were on board with this change. And I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate you as a board for you following along and for you sending us the emails and letting us know that you were in support. Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, we'll now call for the vote, and I think this is important enough. Ms. Ellis, please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed. 1,000 times aye. Ms. Boozer Strather.
Yes.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Mr. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Omolola.
Aye.
Ms. Queen.
Aye, aye, aye.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Swan.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Dr. Thornton.
Aye. Colleagues, the vote is unanimous, and again, thanks to everybody for getting this done. We'll now move to... We're going to reconvene colleagues, as you know, in executive session. So after that is over, we will then come back to approve items taken in executive session. A motion is in order to recess into executive session.
So move.
Seconded.
Brought mood and seconded that we recess into executive session. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. The ayes have it. Colleagues, please sign back in.
Oh, I'm sorry. A point of clarification, Dr. Thornton. Our board members will have received a new Zoom link to reconvene in executive session. So everyone will need to check their emails for that new link.
Please look for that, colleagues, and sign back in as soon as possible. Thank you very much, and thanks to the viewing public or the listening public. Thank you very much.
Good night. I see a lot of Parkdale students. Good night, y'all.